So we're gonna open this meeting, I don't have a gallows to start, but North Las Vegas, we welcome you to our city council meeting and to this virtual city council meeting today. Probably maybe for the next month, we might have to do this. There are two public forums set aside for public comment, one at the beginning of the meeting and one at the end. When I call upon you to speak, I request that you limit your comments to no more than three minutes and that we avoid repetition. Madam City Clerk, are we in compliance with an about open meeting law?
Mayor, yes, we are in compliance.
Thank you. Now we have the opportunity to have an invocation given by our new Mayor Pro Tem, Baron, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Councilman Richard Churchill. Please rise.
Thank you very much, Mayor. This is actually a big honor, I've never given a public invocation, so I'll do my very best and keep it short, but hopefully meaningful. We all please bow your heads. Today, what, dear Lord, I ask you first to receive our sincere thanks for the many blessings that you bestowed upon our city, that we have fantastic residents who've been coming together to help each other out, that we have wonderful partners here in the city and in our valley who've been coming to the aid of our residents. And of course, that our friends and political officers have also been coming to our aid to allow the city to be able to help its residents. And I also want to thank you very much for our wonderful staff that has provided so much relief and, Lord knows, you know that we have a long way to go. And that being said, I also ask you to show upon us our many blessings to our city, and I ask you to guide us with your wisdom that we make fantastic decisions to allow our residents to get through a very difficult time. Thank you very much, and amen.
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 Richard?
Hey Mayor, thank you so much for the privilege of giving the Pledge of Allegiance. If everybody's standing, we'll start. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate that. Since we're having this virtual meeting, we're gonna skip council items tonight and move on into the first public forum. Now is the time to set aside the comment on posted agenda items. Madam City Clerk, do we have any written comments or calls in regards to posted agenda items this evening?
Mayor Lee, we have no callers on the line and we've received no written comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Then we will close the public forum and we will move to the agenda.
Item one, approve city council regular meeting agenda of July 15th, 2020. Mayor Council staff recommends that items eighteen and nineteen be continued to August 19th, and with that change, we recommend approval of the agenda as amended.
Thank you very much, Counsel. Any comments or questions on that motion, I mean on that amendment? Pardon me, any comments or questions concerning the agenda as amended? I'm sorry. Move to approved as amended, Mayor. Thank you. The Chair took the motion. A voice vote, Mayor Lee, aye.
Aye.
Baron, aye. Councilwoman Black, aye. Scott, did you, I think I heard Scott too, right Scott?
Yes, I said aye, correct.
Thank you very much. It's been a long day for me, guys, so I appreciate you working with me. Items approved, moving on to consent agenda.
Mayor Council, the consent agenda consists of items two through fourteen, and staff recommend approval as published.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? If not, the Chair will take the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Thank you very much.
Can I have that one?
Okay, Councilwoman, thank you. This is a very good, very good meeting this evening, a lot of great things are happening, but it is a quick meeting. Moving on to the business portion of our agenda.
Mayor, we do need to have the vote, you could call the vote.
Did I go past that? Thank you very much. Any comments, questions? If not, the Chair will take the motion.
Move to approve again.
Thank you very much, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Mayor's aye. Councilwoman Black, aye.
Aye.
Baron, aye.
Councilwoman Black, aye.
Unanimous, thank you very much. Now, thank you, moving on to business.
Item number fifteen, accept grant award from Clark County in the amount of twenty-three thousand, twenty-three million eight hundred thousand for coronavirus relief funds. Mayor Council, this has been something that has been long awaited and long coming. I wanna first thank the County Commission and Chairwoman Chris Patrick for her leadership in helping make sure that we were able to secure the first half of our funds. As you all know, back in April, the federal government, the United States Congress passed this bill, which provided, was basically a two trillion dollar bill that provided, it was designed to quickly provide relief dollars into local governments, for both first effect and second effect. First effect are dollars that were designed to go to local governments as they were dealing with them in a pandemic that at that point was kind of raging out of control. And at the same time, it was to provide second effect, what they called second effect dollars, which was to provide dollars for, on the economic impact that it was having to residents and the businesses. These dollars were received by the state in April. Unfortunately, the distribution to local governments, which is, the act requires the, all local governments under five hundred thousand to receive their distribution from the state, from the governor's office. Unfortunately, at this time, we've yet to receive those. Clark County recognizing the need to make sure that our residents were able to start receiving these dollars, we've got businesses that have been closing, we have businesses that are struggling, we have residents that are struggling. To make sure that these dollars were quickly put into the community, the County Commission came together and decided to give some of their direct dollars that they received from the federal government to the city of North Las Vegas. We appreciate this, this is not consistent with what other states are doing, counties giving dollars, but we're thankful for that. We are working with Clark County and the other jurisdictions that were left out of receiving direct dollars to make sure that we receive the dollars from the state and that Clark County is reimbursed for the dollars that they have moved to North Las Vegas so that we could bring this item before you all today. It's very important that Clark County gets reimbursed for those dollars because those dollars are being used for regional services that they provide, as the regional service provider for health, for housing, for a lot of different services in the region, it's important that they get those dollars back. So what we have before you today is this twenty-three, twenty-eight million dollars. And one of the things that we wanted to make sure, as I've expressed to all of you all in briefings and as we talked about this on the record at different times, is making sure that we maximize the amount of dollars that can go into the community. We've seen different models here in the region of how these cares dollars have been treated. The city of Las Vegas used the majority, the vast majority of their cares dollars to shore up things internally within the city of Las Vegas. We are taking an approach that's very similar to Clark County, which is taking as many of the dollars as we can and pushing them into the community. So with what we're presenting to you today, it actually is about over eighty percent, somewhere around eighty-five percent of the dollars that we're receiving from Clark County, we are going to be pushing directly into the community. In six different programs is what we're proposing to you all today. The other few million dollars of, because right now, there's eighteen million dollars that's available in this first tranche from Clark County. Some of those dollars were dedicated directly to the direct costs that we've incurred, they were unbudgeted as a result of COVID, from COVID testing to deep cleaning to the PPE emergency response, to the face masks and the different things that had to be purchased for our first responders. So some of the money's going there, but it's just a small amount. And then eighty-three percent of the dollars are going to be going into our community. And now, what I'd like to receive from you today is, I'm going to present some different programs, and I can present them if it's either desired of Mayor Council, like present them one at a time and then we can discuss them, or I can present all six of them and then have an open discussion of them afterwards. But we'd like to get from you all some feedback, because at this point, what we've done is we have reserved N L V cares dot com, that's N L V cares dot com as a domain name, that we are going to quickly put up information for the public to start being able to apply for these funds and receive these funds. So the desire is make sure we get all of your feedback, build them into the program, and then launch these programs next week.
Why don't we have you give a presentation all the way through, every one of them, and then write down little questions you guys might have, and we'll let Ryan do his presentation and then we'll pick it apart a little bit, or ask questions, I should say.
So the first program I'd like to submit for your consideration is a small business camp program. We're proposing that that program be funded with thirteen million dollars. Of that thirteen million, at this time, since we've only received half of the cares dollars, we're proposing that six point five million dollars at this time goes into that program. That eligible, the reimbursement that that provides for our businesses is for working capital, for payroll, for utilities, for operations, for costs that they've incurred in order to bring, to comply with the different social distancing orders and the different orders that have come from the governor's office that we've been enforcing, and their general, they've been impacted by COVID. This provides up to fifteen thousand dollars per business with forty, that has forty employees or less. The requirements are very simple, the businesses need to have a city of North Las Vegas business license from August first, first, twenty nineteen with a North Las Vegas physical address. They must be, they must have an active business license with the city of North Las Vegas, and they must show that there's still been financial hardship, the data experience. One of the things that's yet decided on this grant is, depending on some of the feedback we've received from you all, is these grants can be administered by different parties. If you recall, this is a grant that I specifically mentioned we would probably have County administer for us. In fact, I mentioned it to Clark County, where I testified before the commission to receive this million dollars. However, one of the things that we've recognized is, first, Clark County has a ten percent administration fee on it, which means on this first allocation, we pay them six hundred fifty thousand dollars to administer the program. We feel that it's a pretty simple program, based on the qualifications that it outlines, and we'd like to see if we could maximize the amount of dollars to go into the community. So we're also talking with other potential partners in order to help us administer this, and at the same time, we're working internally with staff to see if there's the ability that we have to quickly administer ourselves, because it's, we wanted to, the thought of doing it with County was, they've already, they've already put an office in place, put a procedure in place, and there's no need for us to repeat it, to replicate it and build our own wheel that looks just like theirs, because it would have been added cost and less money we can put in the community. However, what we're seeing for a ten percent administration fee at Clark County, that makes it a pretty costly program to administer, we think we can do it cheap, but we're not sure yet. So we're still uncertain on who the administer administering party will be, whether it's us or another entity. So that's the first program. The second program is a rent and mortgage assistance program. We propose that this be funded at ten million dollars. However, of that ten million, because we've only once again received half of the cares dollars that were supposed to be allocated to North Las Vegas, at this time, we'll be proposing five million dollars for this program. This is for rent and mortgage reimbursement, it's mental assistance and mortgage assistance for residents up to six thousand dollars for five months, whichever is left. And there's a two thousand dollar rent mortgage cap on it. The requirements are the city of North Las Vegas residents, and they must show financial hardships due to COVID. We once again on this, as far as administering, we're looking at other partners, there are some partners that administer this, there's some partners that we use currently that administer this, and we feel that based on the percentage administration fee that we're negotiating with them currently at this time, that we probably have this administered outside of the city by one of, by a potential partner in the community that will help us get these dollars into the hands of people. The third program is the utility assistance program. We propose that be four million dollars to put into this program. Of that, because once again, we've received only half of the dollars that we should have received from the federal government, we will at this time propose to be funded at two million dollars. This will be for any water bills, fees, or charges, it'll be able to be used for reimbursement of those. This is, this will be provided assistance to the city of North Las Vegas residents. One of the things that was added to this after briefings with you all individually was Councilman Churchill's suggested this also be used for businesses, and so we've added that into the description, that residents and businesses would be eligible for this facility. It's for their commercial and residential water bills, and the assistance is up to five hundred dollars for five months, whichever is left. And it will be applied to the credit, to something we believe based on how we currently administer a similar type of program internally, and this will be, we believe this is something that will be administered internally within the city. Fourth proposal is a daycare park program, proposing that this be funded at the amount of six hundred thirty thousand. At this time, once again, we're proposing that half of that, three hundred twenty thousand be put into the program, because that's how, that's, we've only received half of our cares dollars. This is something that will go to reimbursements for salaries and materials that are used to help with daycare, provided our parks at the library and other facilities in the city. This is one that we're still working on, it's in the infant stage. This one and the broadband assistance, which is the next program, that is a monthly service eligible requirement that allows for internet service for K through twelve children, we're proposing that be funded at a million dollars, or two million dollars, but currently at a million dollars. And we kind of lump these two together, this daycare program and the broadband assistance program. What we do know is we know that based on the struggles that Clark County School District is having in their response to answering to COVID, they've got a number of different programs that they're looking at, and all the programs appear that they are going to need some assistance from the local jurisdiction. And so we're uncertain about some of these particular programs, but we believe that the broadband assistance administered, a potential partner in that, for example, could be COC, through their Connects, Compete, and we would be administering the daycare program, but these programs are kind of in flux. We might be coming back to the council to ask for some further allocation for them, because at this time, we're just uncertain of what the C C S D plan is going to look like, and therefore what our response needs to be to that plan. Because what we know we want to do is we want to be able to provide assistance for our residents as they and their families adjust and make decisions that are necessary in order to, I won't say comply, but in order to conform to the C C S D plan. That's kind of where we are on those, on those two plans. The fourth, the fifth, the sixth and final plan is a nonprofit program. This is a program that we propose, an amount of six hundred eighty thousand dollars for this round, and when we receive the other amount of money, the other half of our cares dollars, we'll put another six hundred eighty thousand dollars into it. And this is, this will provide for our nonprofit partners in the city of Las Vegas working out of these operations, social distancing infrastructure. This is, helps make sure that our nonprofits, many of them that are providing services that are directly related to COVID, that we help them. Some of them have had disruption in their fundraising abilities, many of them had their annual fundraisers that were canceled because of COVID, postponed because of COVID. So it's to make sure that we can keep them, just like our for-profit businesses, it's to make sure we can keep our nonprofits in business, that they can continue providing services to North Las Vegas. We believe this is something that we can easily administer with staff level, given the relationship that we have with them, we work with them regularly in our C B D G, C D B G process. So that's, those are the six programs they were proposing for the North Las Vegas cares dollars. And if you're adding these up, this does come to fifteen point five, I mean, we have over fifteen point five million dollars in programs for the residents of North Las Vegas, to get the money into their hands right away. So then I'll take any questions.
So I just got, there's been a lot of feedback from somebody's phone, I don't know if it's staff or if it's from council, but if you're not speaking, could you mute your phones just a little bit? There's just a sound in the back on somebody's phone that distracts you a little bit. So please mute your phone if you're not planning on speaking. Counsel, I think what I'm gonna do is I'm just gonna look at the agenda, I mean, the way we sit at the council chambers, and just start with Isaac, and I'm just gonna work my way to everybody, because some of these questions will probably get answered by another councilperson. So Councilman Baron, you being first, do you have any questions or concerns or thoughts? Now, tonight, we are only calling for a motion to accept the money from the county, so if you think of something later on tonight, you're still able to pass that information on, but Councilman Baron, do you have anything of these six items that interest you or you have concerns about that you'd like to discuss?
First thing, thank you very much, Mayor, I really appreciate it. Well, first thing, I know what I want to do is I want to personally thank our Chairwoman, who represents, of course, you know, her district, the county, but she's very, of Las Vegas woman, and that Chairwoman, Chris Patrick, too. I know she's been working really hard, you know, to help us out here. And I still hope that, you know, we still have good conversations going on with the state, and that they will also, you know, once they see the sincerity of how, you know, we are planning to turn the majority of this money right back into our community, and not spending the money on things within the city, the R S A, on money for our own staff and all this, right? And we're turning the grand majority of this money to people who are on the ground right now hurting. With, very soon here, at the end of this month, you know, we have the end of the governor's protection looming, very soon at the end of the month. I have feelings that, you know, that we see that the protections of keeping the eviction courts closed are gonna end, and people are getting, people are feeling the heat, they're very, they're really hoping for health, they have, these are people with families, and we know that if people start getting evicted, that they will, mostly, you know, in the Latino community, that people are gonna start doubling and doubling up at home, and of course, that is not what we wanted, with eight, nine, O C O being one of the hot zones for infections, for the COVID nineteen infections. And so I'm kinda, just to begin with, I'm extremely ecstatic that we're now able to take these funds, and I realize it's not going to help everybody in every situation, only because there's just not enough funds to go around, but we're able to help out our residents. I'm kind of hoping that we can have just a little bit of money, if there's any way, I don't know if it's impossible, but I'm kind of hoping we can have a resolution, someone to help resolve situations with our landlords and their clients, their tenants, to maybe help guide people to come up with, you know, with resolutions. For instance, if someone owes like four thousand dollars to their landlord, I know, I don't want us getting involved in a business transaction, but if we have anybody who could, you know, mediate, you know, some sort of a discussion between landlord and tenant, for them to come to an agreement that they'll pay the two thousand dollars, for instance, if they get the two thousand dollars from our, from these funds, well, they take that and, you know, and no longer pursue eviction against our tenants. I don't know if that's part of our legal purview, and I don't know if we have, well, I know that we don't have technically a set jurisdiction. I'm wondering if we could take a little bit of that cash and maybe get a mediator involved, not something very, very, you know, informal, but something that'll be meaningful as a go-between, preferably a Spanish speaker. And the other thing is, again, I am happy that we're, that this money will be turned right back to the community, and I'm hoping that, you know, I still have a few people who are asking for the PPE equipment, mostly informal groups like churches and some businesses, and they like to have some, I'm thinking, hopefully we can get some high-quality reusable masks. I like the ones that we've been giving out here, that we've got from the Latin Chamber of Commerce that have the Nevada flag with the Battleborn logo on it. Perhaps we can get some North Las Vegas ones that have our logo on the side, you know, that we could put out there. If it's not, and I just think to myself, I know, you know, if we spent, you know, fifty grand, you know, on fifty thousand masks, whatever, that's still cheaper than just one or two hospitalizations, you know. If one person who gets becoming infected is hospitalized at U M C, you know, that's gonna be, what, probably thirty-five, forty, fifty thousand dollars right there. And I just think that's a cheap insurance, if we can spare a little bit of cash, you know, to buy these washable masks. Anyhow, again, thank you very much, that was a long question, but again, people are feeling the heat, and our business, our small business community, they're really, really looking forward to this, and already, you know, they've been kind of overwhelmed, overwhelming the partners that we've already engaged with, that little bit of hidden money that we got here last week. And that's probably my, that's probably my cue to shut up now. Thank you so much.
Yes, the city manager, are you taking these notes? Is that what, what was your, the note with something to the rental assistance program?
Yeah, I mean, I think that the program covers what the councilwoman was talking about. My sense was he was just expressing the frustration and the need to get it out there right away. Our Government Affairs Manager, Jared Luke, has been time working with the realtors on this program to make sure that we're helping this to something that will go directly to landlords, so we make sure that the rent's being paid for. But I think, I think I understand everything that he said.
Isaac, also, just for your information, I did pursue that face mask question you had, the same company that, those wonderful things that the state were given, I think they actually went out of the country and had it done, but they were like nine dollars apiece or something, but I can, Lori knows that, they were quite costly, I thought they would be a lot cheaper, but we can get that information to you too, okay? We have, I have plans to work on that. Councilman Churchill?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep this brief, you know, Mayor Pro Tem Baron covered a lot of the issues that I was gonna bring up, and he's spot on with his opinion. I just want to add that from the very outset, with the briefings that we've been having and the division of our staff and city manager, I think is exemplary. I think we've always put our businesses and our residents first, and we continue to do that with the money. So I want to commend Ryan and the staff in taking this direction. You know, we definitely, you know, set ourselves apart from many others over here in the valley. It's unfortunate that we still have to fight our way to get the remaining money, but with the support of our representatives, that's of course, including our Commissioner, Marilyn Kirkpatrick, working with us now, I think we're well on our way. But I did want to just try to clarify or just maybe put it down as a thought as we go forward. I know that we have, at least right now, and eventually, there will be a limited amount of money with an awful lot of need. uh, with, uh, an awful lot of need out there. So I, so I, I guess I would suggest or put it out there that, you know, if, if we have more needs than we do in a particular area of available money, uh, are, are we going to just, uh, you know, use up the money that we have, you know, to completely, uh, to cover less, let's just say, a, uh, a, a utility bill? At, at, you know, first come, first served? Or are we going to look at the, the total amount of need and, and break that money down proportionately so we could spread that money out to as many people as possible and as many businesses as possible? Of course, there'll be some issues that will probably need to be, uh, adjudicated, you know, completely when it comes to, uh, evictions and such like that. Uh, but maybe some we, we'll be able to work with the, 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 uh, the property owner with and with the renter. But, uh, I, I guess my, uh, my concern, and that's not the appropriate word to use, but my thought would be if we could allocate that money, uh, along as far as we can to, to make a dent in it, whether it be seventy-five percent or eighty percent of whatever the need may be, so we could spread it out to as many businesses, small businesses and, and residents as possible. But other than that, at this point right now, uh, I, I, I think we're, we're spot on. And, uh, once again, appreciate very much the, uh, the vision of, uh, putting this money back into the community for our small business and for our residents. Thank you for doing that. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman. That's actually a really good point. One, one of the things we talked about as staff is, um, we're not sure what to, I think what, what I understand you saying is we're not exactly sure the, the demand on some of these programs. Some of them might be more popular than others based on need. And so we will be carefully monitoring that after launch and we'll be bringing, uh, status reports back to you all in the event that we, we believe that there needs to be a, uh, clawback in one area and a reallocation in another area. Um, of course, all that's contingent on, we are meeting with the I F C in, in the beginning of August to try and, um, get the other portion of dollars that we have. And it'll just be a timing thing, whether we are stuck with this pot for a while or whether, um, the I F C, uh, reads into the need like we do and as well as the legislative intent of giving us the entire amount that we should have received. But we will be, to answer your question, we will be carefully monitoring this and making sure, because what's important to remember is the dollars have to be spent by December thirty-first. So we're going to make sure that these dollars are pushed into our community. It's unfortunate our community has, has had to wait since April to get these dollars, and now here we are three months later. But we will make sure that they are put into the community fast and that we will, we will use every dime before December thirty-first. And that means we have to reallocate them to different areas. We absolutely will be that.
Yes, uh, thank you for that. And, uh, let me just add that, uh, you know, I, I, I believe setting up that website, so it'll be a point of, um, contact for people to go to. I, I think that, that, that was, uh, a, a very good idea. It makes life a lot easier, rather than have phone calls come into not only council, but even if they will come into council from different, uh, entities, whether it be businesses or residents, at least we'll have a, uh, you know, something to refer the people back to, to, to go ahead and make that request. So I, I wanna thank you for that as well.
Yeah, no, no problem. And that's kinda was our thought on it. It's a one-stop shop. We will be adding to that, uh, uh, other resources. For example, you know, the, the state, even though they were supposed to give, uh, you know, they, they held back two hundred twenty-eight million dollars that they were supposed to give to local governments based on the federal formula. But they still had six hundred, six hundred and thirty million dollars that they needed to spend on, on COVID-related things. So one of the examples you saw I F C passed yesterday was fifty million dollars that was going into rent and mortgage assistance. Now, that's a state plan. So we will make sure that state, federal plans, we are currently administering some HUD plan. We're gonna put those also, those resources also on this location so that our residents can go to this one location, they can see what they can get from the city, they can see what they, uh, qualify for from the state, they can see what they qualify for from the federal government, to just really give them access in one central portal in order to get the funds that they need.
Yes, great. Thank you again.
Thank you, uh, and thank you for participating a little bit of that utility assistance, Richard. Just finished the time with Ryan on that. I feel it was a good change. Um, Councilman Black?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have one comment and one question. I'll start out with my comment, which, uh, I'm not gonna repeat everything that it says. It's been articulated very well, how we're, um, approaching the use of these, uh, finite and very valuable dollars to our community. I just wanted to say, I think it's amazing how they're being distributed over several key pillars, uh, stabilizing our community, including housing, small business, family and children, as well as health and safety. And I think the investment we're making in stabilizing our community now will position us in a, uh, in such a way that will enable our residents and our businesses to recover at a faster rate. So I know this investment will, will pay dividends by, by the way that we're doing it. So I, I also applaud the use of these dollars in this prudent and forward-thinking manner. Uh, my question is, we currently have a program on our website. There is a link to a document called Small Business Stabilization Forgivable Loan Program. I just am curious, is the program relative to, um, the item number one that you discussed? The, uh, I think you said six million dollars or five million dollars for small business, um, forgivable grants? Are these one in the same or two separate programs?
That's a great question, Councilman. They're two separate programs. The program we currently have on our website were dollars that came in through HUD and it's for stabilization. Those dollars are available for businesses right now. The real difference that you see in these dollars, because by the way, cares was two trillion dollars, the entire cares program. And of that two trillion, there was a hundred and fifty billion that went directly to the states for local governments. That's what this money is. But then there was the rest that went to airlines and went to HUD, went to DOJ, went to all the different departments. The Department of Transportation, and then they're allocating grants. So that's a grant that is directly through the, the, through HUD. And the real big distinction between these two, which is what's unique about these cares, these direct dollars to local governments and why they're so valuable, is there's only three strings attached. In fact, you've heard, um, the, even, uh, uh, on the Senate when it was passed, you heard, you've heard, uh, members of Congress and members of the administration comment about how the hundred and fifty billion dollars that goes to local government has three little strings attached and is purposely designed so that it quickly gets out there to the community. And we just have to use reasonable, a reasonable standard efforts in making sure that the dollars are put to the intent of what Congress used them for. Whereas the HUD dollars, which is through a small business, uh, loan forgiveness plan on our website, there's a lot, there's the traditional federal strings that are attached to that. And it's very cumbersome, especially for a small business of like, you know, five or six people, to wade into getting federal dollars through a traditional federal program. That usually done by professional grant writers.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Yeah, thanks a lot for that distinction.
Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate you. Councilman Goines Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just first of all, a huge thank you to the county for their efforts and always working with us to get North Las Vegas. Um, we do totally appreciate that. Um, and I agree with my colleagues on, on a lot of items that you said. But I also wanna just add that we know that codes that are more needed than others, so to speak. However, I just, I just think value-wise that we have more people who are struggling than not. Looks can be very deceiving. If you have to decide between whether I'm gonna pay the gas bill this month or the water bill next month, that's a huge issue for some of our families in North Las Vegas. Um, so I just wanna make sure that we, we're very cognizant of, of the applications that will start to come in. And also, um, working with a couple constituents who've stopped me already with the red tape of going through some of these applications. So I hope that they're just a very simple process that we can easily verify so that they're not going through red tape so that they're so frustrated that they just, they just get up and run out these applications. Um, and I know these are program ideas, but is this the time to ask, um, specific questions about some of the programs, a couple of them? Or should I wait for those?
No, absolutely. This is the time. Also, another thought, too, is if, if you happen to know examples of red tape, we don't wanna replicate that. So if you, if you might not have it now, but if I could get that from you later on, that would be very helpful to make sure that we don't go down the same path. Um, the, the mayor provided us the contact information for one of the administrators of Las Vegas's program. And Alfredo, I think already has, but if not, he's, he's reaching out to him with that simple question of where, what things went right? What things went wrong? What, what can we learn from your guys' process to make sure that we do it better over in North Las Vegas?
Okay.
So what are the specifics?
Well, my only other question is for, like, for the hardships with the rental assistance or utility assistance or things like that. So are these hardships basically for residents who are unemployed or furloughed? Or, you know, can you just, like, you may have a, a family with only one person employed right now. They're still falling behind and they're still struggling. So is all of that taken into consideration?
Yeah, I, all the requirement is, is that they, they, that the residents must show financial hardship due to COVID. I think it's a pretty, um, not overly, overly complicated threshold. I think that, uh, it is a good question, though, on how are we going to have them, how do they show us that, right? If they must show financial, uh, hardship? I think there's probably a number of ways that they could show that, um, from, you know, a furlough letter or a laid-off letter or there's a lot of ways that they could prove that up. The, the design of the program or the design of these dollars is for us to establish these requirements, but to not make it so onerous or red tape, as you said, that people can't qualify for them. So we're still building some of that out. We're going to follow some of the jurisdictions. Um, we've successfully done another part of the country because, once again, they've had these dollars for a few months and they've been able to allocate them pretty successfully.
Okay. Um, and I don't, this question, we may or may not be able to answer that. Essentially, with the, the wifi, uh, monthly service fee for the nine ninety-five through Cox? Um, and that, that would go through, we see if we have to use more or less, will it, would it, would it go through us?
Um, it would be, it would pass through us, but it would go to the, the connect, which is the Cox program. Um, and they would hook it up or do whatever they do. But we would be the one that would be paying for the service for the students that are able to qualify. Um, or the, and it's K through twelve children. So it's not just C C S D students, but it's any student that is, you know, some of these students have, some parents have already selected to leave C C S D, uh, and go to more established programs that provide, uh, you know, the, the experience in providing distance education.
Mm-hmm. And I'm just wondering, 'cause I know, and I don't know if they're still doing it, but they basically, they set off their free reduced lunch, um, numbers. So if they're still doing that same, then, you know, not in C C S D, I just don't know how they would identify those, and that's, that's just my concern.
Okay, that's a good concern. We'll, I'll note that down and, and see how we make sure we identify that the assistance is going to a K through twelve child.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Um, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Pam. Appreciate you. If you have other thoughts or concerns, Ryan's available to continue working on this. I just, I have a question, and I know that some of our other cities, at least one other city's already done that. But is this money allowed to go to city staffing? That's been a question I've wondered.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. I mean, I, I wanna take what, um, Councilman Black just said as far as we're using it to stabilize the community. Uh, the reality is, is the, there's very, uh, specific examples of the dollars, how these cares dollars can be used for staffing. And it's for staffing that's substantially connected to, to, their, their work is substantially dedicated to COVID. Um, and basically, the way that's been defined in the treasury regs and follow-up regs is anybody that's, uh, first responder. So fire, police, ambulance, uh, as well as nurses and doctors. We don't run hospitals in North Las Vegas, but other entities do. So it, it kinda constructively deter, it deems that they are, um, substantially connected to alleviating COVID. One of the things that, that, um, I've been talking with the bargaining groups since the, we first recognized that this was, that Congress was looking at some kind of a bill like this in March, is discussing the fact that, uh, especially once we learned that it was not to be used for, uh, lost revenues, that we took a golden goose-type approach, which is this idea that a forward-looking approach to using these dollars is stabilizing, as Councilman Black said, stabilizing your community, stabilizing your tax base, doing whatever you can to, to help them follow your first rule of business, Mayor, which is the first rule of business is to stay in business. We wanted to do, to maximize our ability to use these dollars to keep them in business because recognizing their ability to survive later on is, is something that's going to help provide services to residents for decades to come. If you look at the, the businesses that have closed, this is kind of a, a, I had to ask staff to check the number again. But if you look at the businesses that have closed in the city of North Las Vegas due to COVID, they represent over two thousand years of tax year change. And so that's, that's money that'll never come back. If you look at Texas and, um, Rancho Sanafages, because we know those numbers, those, it's, he's not coming back on, it's, it's about five hundred thousand dollars a year unless revenue the city is receiving because they're lost ball. So it was made very clear to our, our bargaining groups. And, and some of bargaining groups, the members in those groups wouldn't even qualify because what they do is not substantially connected to COVID. Uh, so for example, our Teamsters. There's very few Teamsters that we have that are in position, that are substantially dedicated to COVID, that would qualify for this to even be used for their salaries, um, as, as the, the, the act is written. So it's a good question. Um, our, our intent with these dollars, I think I've, I've, as, as I've briefed and, uh, received guidance from, from you all individually, was to use them to stabilize the community, not use them to stabilize the state. Yes, there are services that we provide that are very important to our residents and we need to make sure that we're able to stay in business in order to keep providing those services. But if we're not able to stabilize them, if we're not able to support them, then we're going to see businesses close, we're going to see homes go into foreclosure, and all the effort that we've made to bring home values back up and all the effort that we've made will disappear. So we're, that's, that's the reason that we are dedicating such a high percentage of these dollars directly into the community. We believe that in the long term, it will pay back by stabilizing that tax management.
Okay, well, we'll do the best job, if anybody out there for our residents, out of that. But I think the most important part of this presentation, Ryan, is to, uh, is to thank you and Pam. The, we, the, the rest of this community outside of City of Las Vegas owes you two so much and, and our, and our legal team, and everybody who put everything together and, and fought like they did and threatened and fought and screamed that our residents were being, uh, left out of this program. And for the county to step forward, every one of you who said, "Wonderfully, we're at the county and they deserve it," those votes is very, very important. But we're hoping this is just a pass-through, that the state will do what it's supposed to do, the way we interpret the law, to reimburse them and to help us get full funding so we can help our community. But, but once again, Pam, seriously, your audit editorial was just exciting and, and honest and, uh, it, it set the pattern for Ryan to be able to continue to move forth and make the case. And I think, Pam, your, your, uh, testimony in that made the difference. So, you know, what can one city councilperson do? Twenty-three million dollars worth. That, that's what I said. And possibly forty-six million if we get this right. So Pam, from the city of North Las Vegas, Mayor, Council and residents, we thank you so much. We appreciate it. And I'd like you to say something on that.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, that testimony is very relevant, true from the heart. And our, to me, our model is we, we, we just don't quit. And so we are going to remain very, very vocal so that we reach the state so that our voice is heard, um, as far as we need to take this. But it is very serious, and it just shows how much we all care about our residents and our city. And so this is not an option for, for North Las Vegas. So we're not stopping until we get what's due to us.
Thank you. Thank you very much, once again, from the whole community. So if you have any other questions or thoughts, you've kinda got a platform with Ryan. We've learned a lot, but other ideas will come. If you'll just kinda meet with him or Michaela or whoever, you know, and our legal team, Dylan, whoever's working on certain sources of it and get your information. I think what, it'll be two weeks before we will have this ready for the next councilor, or will we do a special meeting?
Um, that's a good question. Not exactly sure yet. We, what? Um, that's a good question. I'm not exactly sure yet. We what the the plan is, is that we are going to, um, get the program up as quick as we can and get all the requirements up as quick as we can. Um, and then, in theory, we can have people applying for this before we get the check from Clark County. According to Clark County's agenda item, those dollars will be coming to the city of North Las Vegas no later than the end of this month. So we are our plan is is to get get, um, this up. So if it would be helpful, probably, uh, if the if the motion could include these programs as described, at least these dollar amounts into the program so that there's no delay in us moving them forward. Um, do you think we need anything else other than that, Michaela?
No, I mean, I think if 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 Councilman Black can give you some authority to delegate it, um, based on how you presented it.
Yeah, let's if we get the motion could include, if there's authority, um, for this city manager's office to delegate, uh, the twenty-three point eight million dollars into these programs as described, um, in the presentation, that would give us the freedom to make sure that the that we don't, there's no delay.
Yeah, because that could be, um, another month.
Yeah.
In some cases, so.
Yeah, as as the councilman said, I mean, one of the things we are, um, very cognizant of is the fact that federal dollars, this is something that, um, City Attorney Moore has been pointing out, these federal dollars stop. Uh, many of the federal assistance programs stop at the end of this month. And so in response to Councilman Churchill's concern of making sure that we've appropriated the right amount of dollars in different places, that could change because some people that might not need them now, um, could need them, um, next month because federal programs, unemployment, things like that have dried up. So clearly, Congress could change that, and there could be changes there. But we are expecting, these dollars are sorely needed now, as Councilwoman, uh, Goines Brown said, but there's the potential that they could be really, really, really needed, um, as they if if things are to deteriorate further.
Okay, so I'm going to call for motion, and let me state this motion correctly. Um, we want the city manager's office to to delegate a spoken in the presentation this meeting tonight and to quickly move this money forth. Is, uh, can Michaela, do you have the the motion that you'd like to hear? How would you?
Mayor, uh, I I would recommend that the motion be that, uh, Council provides the city manager with authority to, um, appropriate the funds that are received from Clark County as appropriate and as set forth in the presentation.
Okay, so the motion will state that what we discussed today gives the city manager the the right to move forward with this program as the presentation was outlined today. Can I say it like that? Does that help out?
Sure.
So I think, not to mess it up, I'll make the motion, that's what I just said. Counsel, is there any comments or questions on that motion? Very seldom do I make a motion, but I think if we just say it one time and we get it on the record properly, it'd be important. So is there any counsel comments or questions on this motion? If not, the chair will take the oh, I don't, um, I don't know if there's anybody that would like to speak on this, Catherine, before we make this, uh, motion, uh, happen?
This is a business item, but we do not have any written.
No public comment, though. I don't even have public comment. You're right. So so that was the motion. Um, so, uh, the mayor votes aye. Would this be a vote, voice vote?
Aye.
Aye from Councilman Black. Barone, aye.
Councilman Churchill, are you there? Well, he might have been offline. It's, uh, we have.
Was he muted? I know they were muting some.
Counselor, if you're muted, um, we we're missing you at this moment. If you're not here, I'm going to close the roll. Um, right now, the item is approved, or with one, I'll say abstention. I think he probably would vote for yes for us. So thank you very much. We're moving on.
Item number sixteen, pass the adopt resolution number twenty-six fifty, adopting a local cooperative agreement for the Department of Housing and Urban Development's home investment partnership programs for FY twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you. Counselor, any comments or questions on this motion? I mean, on this i- item? If not, the chair will take a motion?
Yes, Mayor, um, I'd like to, uh, of course, uh, urge my, uh, colleagues, uh, to pass this, that to to get the the money rolling as soon as possible. But, um, I wish to abstain, uh, from voting on this, uh, on on this item. Uh, I I don't know if you know this, but, uh, maybe you do. I'm actually chairman of the board to a, um, an organization that's actually dedicated, that actually works, where actually HUD certified, you know, in, um, a movement program. And although at this time, they are not, uh, in any sort of agreement with the city of North Las Vegas to, uh, maneuver any of these, uh, any of these funds, uh, in the future, they might be. And, uh, although I do not draw any sort of salary, um, uh, from, uh, the from my chairmanship on the board, uh, I'd like to make sure that, uh, I abstain, uh, or, uh, for the, uh, sacred transparency and to avoid, uh, any, uh, uh, appearance, uh, of there being favoritism.
Well, thank you very much. We'll note it. Uh, Councilman Barone will be abstaining from this. Um, Chair will call for motion to pass and adopt resolution twenty-six fifty. Any comments or questions?
This is Councilman Black. I'll make the motion to pass and adopt resolution number twenty-six fifty.
We have a motion. Please cast your voice for aye. Councilman Black says aye.
Goines Brown, aye.
And motion is approved. I think we'll show an abstention on Richard. Yeah, maybe he was, um, in a area, he lost Sells coverage. I don't know, but we'll just put an abstention up for him. Thank you very much. Uh, moving on to ordinance's final action. Oh, that motion carries, yeah.
Um, item number seventeen, pass the adopt ordinance number, uh, three zero one six exceeding corporate limits for the city of North Las Vegas, annexing a parcel of land generally located at northeast corner of Sloan Lane and Halle Wells Avenue. Petitioner represents one hundred percent of the area proposed for annexation and and providing other matters property relating thereto.
Thank you, Councilman Barone.
Uh, yes, um, I just want to say, uh, I, uh, thank, uh, uh, the applicants, um, for applying, and, uh, I welcome them to, uh, being, uh, of course, upon successful, um, uh, voting of the and and taking action on this. I wanted to make sure that we have w- invite them and, uh, welcome them to the North Las Vegas family and a tendency of award one getting over there. And then if, uh, after I guess we have our, uh, after we have our public comments, I'd like to make the motion to approve.
Thank you. Um, there'll be no public comment on Isaac, so your motion will stand. So there's any comments or questions? If not, the the chair has a motion. Hearing none, the chair says aye.
Barone, aye.
Goines Brown, aye.
Thank you. It's.
Councilman Black, aye.
And Churchill, Councilman Churchill, did you make it back on yet, Mayor Pro Tem? No, so we'll show that as abstention. Item's approved.
Okay, no for the, um, viewing audience, Mayor and Council, item eighteen, nineteen, we're continued to August nineteenth at the meetings.
Thank you. Moving on to city management report.
Mayor and Council, I've got a couple items. Just real quick. First, I wanted to, I appreciate, um, you acknowledging, uh, myself and the councilman for our efforts on care, but it was truly, if there's an example of a team effort, there were many people that worked on, once we recognized the problem and were notified, we were notified by the governor Thursday late afternoon of what was happening. And we quickly mobilized, we worked, uh, me, members on our team, almost all of our directors, um, worked throughout the weekend, uh, putting this together, figuring out what had happened, what we, what it was right, wrong, what we could do, um, mobilizing, getting things ready. Was it the next day? Was it Friday? The the Councilwoman Goines Brown, um, testified before IFC. Well, it seems like there was like a week in between there, but it wasn't. So the next day, the Councilwoman was there testifying before IFC. So by the time that she was able to testify, it I know she was on the on the on the media nine AM, but I don't think they took her testimony till like eleven. There was a lot of work that got into place so that we were able to to provide her the information that was needed of where we were. And that that was work that happened throughout that night. Um, and then there were several other nights where there there was a lot of, a lot of work and a and not a lot of sleep from a lot of people. Um, on the program that was put together, uh, by you for you today, on these these different second effect programs, this is something that, as we were putting together our costs as finance and cash, and everybody was working on the cost. Because if you recall, we had Director Palmer, that was working in the EOC. And so he was, he was carefully monitoring the costs of COVID and things like that and working with, um, with Chief Anderson and Chief Calhoun. While he was working on that, Gina was working on putting together different stabilization programs, many of which we just presented to you all. Um, that was being done. There was just, there was a whole floor of activity. I can't even, uh, basically every s- every single director, um, in in the city, for the most part, was working on this. Um, in finalizing the party that's put together before you, I want to want to thank branch manager, Rich Easter, ACM, uh, Malesio, um, Housing Neighbor Service Manager, Rick Damian, and Government Affairs Manager, Jared Luke, who spent a lot of time this week in in quickly, or the last couple of weeks, quickly putting this together. Um, it really was a team effort from every single department. Um, really grateful for the for the the partnership that I have with City Attorney Moore and her team, the work that they were doing on the weekend. Chris Kraft was on the phone with, uh, you know, we would have these calls and the first thing in the morning on on Friday morning and Saturday morning and Sunday morning. And Chris and and another another group of them, Alfredo and, uh, Rick Damian and Mark Jordan would stay on the phone. I I was on for the first one, and I had some other meetings that conflicted because there was just a huge joint effort going on. But they continued to work on this. So just a lot of work went into this from from folks that had already put in countless hours as we worked through COVID. So I just want to thank them. It's thankless, a lot of the times, what our, uh, public servants do. And they truly magnify and define what public service is and doing what they did to secure these dollars, get this program in place, recognizing all the time that they were thinking of our residents and their needs. Um, also want to, I I had the opportunity to go over and tour the Community Corrections Center, um, as many of you all did. Just a phenomenal amount of work that went into that. It's it's hard to even fathom that the vast majority of that work happened during this pandemic. Um, the work of so many from, you know, Delwyn Goldberg, Assistant City Manager Goldberg, and in leading that effort, every department was involved in that. John Rudix was working his magic to to bring that together. Just thought it was a incredible building. It's an incredible, uh, asset for the community, incredible asset for our for our police, having talked just in the last few days with police officers and their ability to, I mean, just when that thing opened, just as an idea, when that's the day that that opened, we increased police presence in the city of North Las Vegas by ten percent. That's huge. Like, that that is huge for so many different reasons, and we know that's the effect of opening that. We now see that it's it's something that is is going to keep our community safer. We believe those that had a bad day and have to to go in into the center, that, um, Renee, who's the director over there, she's going to provide services and the wraparound support, things that are needed to make sure that we make an impact in people's lives, uh, whether it's it's people that have committed crimes or those that had that have been victimized. It is that is something that's going to help, and it's a tremendous, I know that many of you have gone over there, but just a a great, uh, team effort in an incredible, incredibly stressful time, when a lot of things were happening, they were able to pull that off. Um, and it just it it goes to to the kind of team that we have here. Um, proud and honored to work with them. And that we have continually, it's like every week, there's a new, uh, testament of of their effort and their their hard work.
I agree. I I would like, I don't know what puts you on the spot, but we've been seven days in a special session. Um, can you, do you have any thoughts, processes going to happen or anything you can give the council?
Yeah, I I kind of feel, I mean, it's it's, as as you know, Mayor, having been in several sessions and special sessions, um, each one kind of has its own culture, its own, can get aligned with its own. And it almost seems like every time you think this is never going to end, it's like bam, it ends. So they, there's no doubt that the preparation going into this special session was a little bit different than most most sessions. Most sessions, there's a a form of an agreement that's been worked out with leadership prior to going in. And then during the session, it's discussed, and sometimes it's amended, sometimes it's not, because it's a well-thought-out, uh, proposal agreement. Um, there, I think it's because of all the stresses that have been created by COVID and all the different challenges that are being faced, meaning for the very first time, um, there wasn't that same structure going into the session. So it has started at a little bit lower pace. That being said, uh, it's scheduled for today is the is, um, eighty-three, which is the bill that is going to really address the budget. There's been some budgetary bills that have addressed, um, the budget, but this is the real kind of, uh, you know, meat potatoes of the of the session. Depending on how that bill starts moving within the next twenty-four hours, could depend if it's a if the session wraps up really quickly or if it becomes more of a protracted session. Um, clearly, because of the 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 strong majorities the Democrats have in both bodies and with the with the governor, we would expect that they would be able to put their heads together and come up with something because they don't, they're not relying on both other areas, with the exception of their vote short in the Senate of having enough votes in order to to make any revenue changes. That means they have to cut from within. Um, the latest proposal that just dropped a few hours before this meeting, um, did have some significant cuts to department taxation. Um, we're not weighing in on that. Um, some of the other cuts that have been made are, uh, impacting, the this official impact of about three and a half million dollars to Clark County. We're concerned about that because some of the cuts that are being proposed in Health and Human Services are being cut at county, which provides regional services, so that we will see an impact there. Um, taxation's a bit of a concern because taxation, um, has really grown in what they, um, the services that they provide. They're, they they have assumed a role, which I think is starting to change after some of the legislation from the last session, as far as the oversight of marijuana. Um, cutting the the proposed cuts in taxation, we're not sure what that means. We don't know enough yet to weigh in on it, so we're not weighing in on any of these as as, uh, as a city at this time that don't have any recommendation for us to weigh in on them. Um, our delegation's been working really hard. Uh, um, Government Affairs Manager Jared Luke and ACM Goldberg have weekly conversations with our delegation. Um, sometimes that's all together, but they're probably with some of them daily in contact with them. Um, they're they're working hard. Um, Senator Spearmint has the designation of being the first, uh, legislator in history to cast a vote, uh, via the computer. She was virtual vote. She casted virtual vote yesterday, which was the first recorded virtual vote by a legislator. Kind of kind of cool. So they, the legislature has had to deal with a pandemic. Um, many of them are in an election cycle, um, and they have a one-point-two-billion-dollar budget hole that they're dealing with all at the same time. It it's also for the governor. Um, uh, one of the things that I think Governor Sandoval did very well is he prepared a a budget. He spent a lot of time, um, with Mike Wilden and others preparing a budget for the governor when he came in. That was one of the things that Governor Sisalak mentioned in receiving. And he was able, yes, to put some of his priorities into it, but having received that budget document, having having seen how we deal with the a half-billion-dollar, uh, a year budget at the at the city level, that was tremendous help to Governor Sisalak. But now what we have is we have the governor's office for the first time going through a budget exercise because they didn't prepare the first budget. Their first budget would have been the one they prepared for next year, their first budget. So that is a bit of a learning curve that is understandable that if they work through that with the with the legislature, that that's, you know, difficult, and it's really difficult to make cuts. So we're providing support wherever we can for our legislators, and, uh, we we think that they're they're representing us very well. Um, we've had conversations. Fortunately, we have, a lot of our legislators are on the IFC, and that Interfinance Committee is where we are going to get the other, uh, half of our cares dollars. So we're thankful for them and their leadership there. So we're thankful for them and their leadership there. Um, we're thankful for the support that we've received from Assemblywoman Neal, who wrote a letter on our behalf to receive these cares, the half, the first half of the cares dollars that we've received. We're constantly in contact with, um, Majority Leader, I meant, Ben Roman Reno. And we're thankful for them and Maggie Carlton, who's chair of that committee and working with them to make sure that they recognize and understand we didn't get the half of the cares dollars that would have become to us and we need to put that into our, our community. So that's the kind of legislative report, if there's any questions on it, but that's about where we're at.
I'm going to ask you one more. Um, I, I know I'm taking a little time, but this is very good education for everyone. So I know there was a, a, a little rip between our, uh, school superintendent and the governor, which I, you expect that stuff a little bit, but can every county, if the state doesn't make a decision on this, can the counties make a decision if they don't come to an agreement? Because like some counties have, like Lincoln County, hardly any kids, I mean, what's going on with education?
Well, it, that's, I'm, I'm glad you went that way with the question, they want to weigh in on the rip. But the, it's a misnomer to, to consider our school district, it's kind of misnamed. It's called the Clark County School District, but in reality, Clark County has almost zero impact on what we can do on the school district. What I mean by that is it's, it's funded by the state, um, it's, the primary, uh, oversight is by the state. Yes, there's trustees, but the trustees, really, if you look at it, trustees, they spend two years implementing the changes that are made at the legislature and then the legislature, you know, oh, provides the oversight and the funding for it. So really, that's all at the state level. Um, they're, they're both through the governor's office because the plan that, 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 that the district has worked on has to go there for approval. It doesn't go to the Clark County Commission for approval, it goes to the state for approval. Because really, it's the, it's not the Clark County School District, it's the Southern Nevada School District. It's completely administered, uh, funded and oversight provided at the state level. So there's very little that, that we can do, which is why one of the things we proposed today was anticipating some of the things that they're doing and how we can per, make sure that we put some cares dollars and some services that we can provide to support them and their efforts. There's no doubt, um, that there is a big concern, I've heard it from you, mayor, I've heard it from other council members, and we're working on some ideas. Um, but there's no doubt that there's a very big concern on the fact that the school district plan that they have put together is something that could have a tremendous impact, disproportionate impact on residents in North Las Vegas. Um, and even the, the, what it, the trustees, if you, if you, uh, watched that meeting or listened to that meeting on, on Thursday night, uh, one of the things that they kind of universally agreed on was that there needs to probably be distance learning. That's something that they learned from the survey that, that, survey that they did to the teachers, staff and parents, um, that a lot of people don't feel safe in school. And they, and so if, in fact, the Clark County School District moves that direction where it is a distance learning, um, to start the school year, that is, that had, that has a really, a potential to have a really detrimental impact on our residents. For example, their access to broadband is, is limited compared to other places. And the way that the school district satisfied that last time is they literally took a bus, they outfitted it with wifi and they drove it into communities so that students could come out and they could, you know, get their, get their, get their material through wifi. That is not a sustainable model for, for our community. So we're extremely concerned about that, we're extremely concerned about the fact that even if we stand up childcare type programs within the city of North Las Vegas to help our residents because they need, they're, they need to be at work and they're tr, they're used to being at work, um, while their children are in school and during the summer, they're at work while their children camp. It's not just enough for us to set up camps like we normally would during the summer as a service to our residents that, that need that daycare assistance. Because the problem is, is these, the, the children during that day are presumed to be learning through a distance learning model, not in a camp doing camp activities. And it's, it's, I think it's entirely impractical to assume that our residents, many of them who are blue collar, working their, their tails off, that they can drop their child off at a camp, go to work and then pick their child up from camp and then work with them on, on, as, as distance learning. I mean, I myself, in working with, with my children, like, you, I think back to that, are you smarter than a third grader? That, that TV show, like all the stuff you learn in third grade, like, I, I don't think many of our residents are, are going to have a very high quality of life when they work a full day and then they try and, try and dust off their algebra skills for their child. So it's a very impractical model, we're very, very concerned about it. And, and I struggle with who is the voice because our trustees representing our area have failed to point out that while distance learning might be something that, that makes teachers feel protected, uh, and it will be a, it will be a dep, it, it will devastate our children in North Las Vegas. So we're very concerned about that.
I sometimes wonder if, um, we save some of this cares money, we're able to find enough charter schools to put kids in or something. You know what I mean? I don't know how the charter schools, how they, they work with the, maybe, Kayla, you know, do the charter schools have to abide by the same rules as Clark County School District? But the progris schools and private schools, they could do their own things, is that correct?
Uh, my understanding, mayor, is that they all have to support their partners with the Nevada, uh, nation. And then they approve whatever it's, uh, they think they consider in other departments, considering what they're, have, speak those criteria.
Well, you're, you're well prepared then.
But it's, it's common, it's, you know, there, there are, there's common core, there's federal regulations, state regulations, but just an example of, of a difference, something that, that Councilman Baron taught me is, if you take Delray, which is a new charter school that we have here in the city of North Las Vegas, how they got with COVID on the different learning side versus how other entities, I mean, CCSD dealt with it. When they recognized that the, they were going to have to go to distance learning, they actually took their IT team, they, first they surveyed this to, to figure out who was going to have a, who was going to have a problem with this, who didn't have the infrastructure in their home, whether it's the, the actual hookup, the broadband, or it's actually device, the computer. And once they identified those challenges, they actually took their IT team and their IT team went to the homes of the, of the students, as they call them, their scholars. They went to those homes and they worked with them to make sure that they had connection. And that's the kind of, Kayla, the charter schools, you get charter schools. This is the commitment that I'll make is we will be bringing something bef, before the council, probably the next council. As soon as the next council meeting, I have some ideas. We're a little bit in limbo because we're uncertain the direction CCSD is going and not knowing which direction theirs go, they are going, we're not exactly sure what our response needs to be as far as what kind of services we need to bring to help support CCSD's model. So if, there's, once we get some clarity there, but we do intend to bring some thoughts, uh, to the council and I think some of them are going to be, uh, pretty big thoughts, is, and talking with council members as far as taking a very active role in making sure that, as you said, mayor, if it happens within the four corners of North Las Vegas or that happens to the corporate boundaries, it's our problem, even if it appears that another entity is the ones that are, that have that charge.
Well, I appreciate, I know we went a little bit long in your report, but I know you have worked on a lot of context, it's important. Um, we're going to close the city manager report. Moving on to public forum, Catherine, do we have anybody that wants to discuss with the council anything that was not posted on the agenda?
We have no written comments?
Uh, mayor, this is, mayor, this is-
Oh, hi, Richard.
Councilman Richard, I apologize, I've heard everything that's been going on, but clearly you haven't heard me. I don't know what happened here, but, uh, just for the record, rather than just have me down for abstaining, I voted yes on all of the items that my colleagues voted yes on.
Very good, that, that's wonderful, Richard. We'd love to have you involved with us, we were a little bit worried, maybe you were driving or something and from place to place. So duly, duly noted, the city attorney says that's okay, so you are now on, on the record.
Thank you.
Catherine, do we have anybody on the public forum?
No, we have no callers and we have no written, uh, comments either.
Thank you, I appreciate, uh, yes, sir.
Oh, yes, I, I just want to say, I, I do have, uh, just a, 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 a comment on the, uh, on the city manager's, uh, re, uh, report. If I could, did that be real quick?
Sure, go ahead. It's just us anyway.
Yeah, no, I, 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 I want, wanted to thank, yes, I, I just wanted to agree, uh, with the city manager of the incredible job that every team member, um, brought forth to make, uh, our, uh, community correction center, uh, uh, happening and opening. I mean, uh, uh, ma, making it opening, uh, happen, you know, make it happen. And, uh, I'd rather not, I said any, any person, any one person's name particularly because there's so many people have so much to do with it. And I don't think anyone's ever, um, may, ever opened up a major, um, uh, department in a city in a time of, uh, uh, of a, of a worldwide crisis, uh, uh, and, and did so in such a great fashion. And I'd like to also just mention that, uh, that, that to go along with, with our public safety, that, uh, two of our, uh, senior officers are retiring. Um, Mr., uh, 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 I guess Captain, uh, Don Collins and, uh, one of my favorites, uh, maybe I shouldn't say favorite, but I, I guess, I really do love the guy, Captain George Middlebrook, who, um, I think between the two gentlemen, they represent, uh, uh, more than a half a century of service to our city. And, uh, I, I think, uh, in, in the case of George Middlebrook, he, he's one of these, uh, uh, customer service kind of guys who went, went out and met with, uh, with my residents and met with my businesses. And, uh, I, I think he set a fantastic example for, uh, other, uh, c, uh, command staff that were coming up behind him to follow. And so I just, uh, I know, I know we can't have anything for him because, uh, uh, everything was going on, but I, just mentioning, uh, that, that both these, uh, uh, captains' names, I think is, uh, is appropriate.
Well, thank you very much, and I wasn't aware of that, I'll, uh, I'll wish them well. Thank you very much, close the public forum, this meeting is adjourned, thank you very much.